And we'll come back and do a quorum to see if we have four members that have joined in.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I will start out. This is Mark McLaughlin. I will start out. I'd like to call this Planning Commission meeting, regular meeting of May 11, 2020, to order. Would everybody stand for the pledge allegiance? And Sarah, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
I will. Place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sarah. And now, Madam Secretary, will you please call roll?
Yes. Commissioner Conno.
Present.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner Fan. Commissioner Fan.
Here.
Thank you.
I'm here. Thank you.
That was Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Rivera.
Here.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo. And Chairman McLaughlin.
Here.
Chair, you have quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I now invite you, Madam Secretary, to describe the way the public will access this virtual meeting.
Thank you. This meeting is being livestreamed via YouTube at www.youtube.com/cityofsantaanna-video/live and to our website at www.santa-anna.org/cc/city-meetings. While the meeting is in progress, the public may provide a comment by phone. To comment by phone, please dial 1-669-900-9128 and enter meeting ID 315965149, followed by the pound. When prompted for a participant ID, please enter pound. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, please dial star nine. When the comment period is opened, I will call on you by the last four numbers listed on the caller ID. When you are called on, please state your name, your position on the matter, and your comment. You will have three minutes. I will alert you when your time is up. And that concludes the instructions.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Moving on to public comments on non-agenda items. Madam Secretary, does anyone wish to speak at this time?
No, we have no one who has indicated their desire to speak on non-agenda items.
Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public comments and we'll move to the consent calendar. On the consent calendar, please, we'd like to have, I'd like to have a motion to approve the March 30, 2020 special planning commission meeting. Do I have a motion to approve that submitted to that meeting? The move. Second?
Commissioner Rivera, second.
Okay, so Ken Nguyen first and Rivera, Felix is second. All those in favor? Oh, sorry. Madam Secretary, please do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Conno.
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia.
Hi.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Hi.
Commissioner Rivera.
Hi.
Commissioner Fan.
Hi.
And Chair McLaughlin.
Hi.
Chair, the motion is approved.
Yeah. Okay. Now, I'd like to have a motion and a second on the April 2, 2020, special planning commission meeting. Can I have a motion and a second on that meeting? On the minute from the meeting. Move the motion. Was that you, Felix?
Correct. Motion approved.
Second?
Yeah.
Ken Nguyen?
Second.
All right. Madam Secretary, can we do a roll call on the April 2, 2020, special planning commission meeting minutes?
Commissioner Conno.
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Commissioner Fan.
I'm going to abstain as it was a special meeting on an item where I refuse myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
And Chair McLaughlin.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-1 with Fan abstaining and Vice Chair Contreras Leo absent.
Okay, thank you. The last item is a motion to approve the absence of Vice Chair Contreras Leo, Cynthia Contreras Leo. So I have a motion and a second on that. Bill, will you come up? Yeah, go ahead. Okay, Felix was the motion, second was Kent. Yeah. Okay. Madam Secretary, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Conno.
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Commissioner Fan.
Aye.
Chair McLaughlin.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-1 with Cynthia Contreras Leo absent.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Moving on to the business calendar, I'd like to make a few comments with regards to that, regarding to our business calendar. The formal action by the planning commission shall become effective after the 10-day appeal period unless the city council holds a public hearing on the matter. Then the formal action will become effective on the day following the hearing and decision by the city council. An appeal from the decision or requirement of the planning commission must be filed with the clerk of the council and a copy sent to the planning department within 10 days of the date of the commission's action. The appeal may be made by any interested party, individual, or group. Just to go through some public hearing protocols, I would like to review the following process for a public hearing, so that everybody knows what to expect. Staff will provide a presentation and answer questions from the commission. The public hearing will be open. The applicant will be given an opportunity to speak, limited to 15 minutes. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to comment, limited to three minutes. The applicant will then be given an opportunity to respond to the comments made by the public, limited to five minutes. The public hearing will then be closed. Discussion will return to the commission with formal action, taken to approve, conditionally approved, denied, or continue the review of the application. Please consider the following suggestions when organizing your comments. Please state your name and address, and state whether you support or oppose or are neutral to the proposal. Your statement should include pertinent facts within your knowledge. Avoid gossip, commotion, or repetition. A clear, concise, non-repetitive argument is most effective. That concludes the protocol for the rest of our meeting for the business calendar. Now is the time and place to consider item number one, conditional use permit number 2020-06 for project located at 3800 South Fairview Street. Please note that the decision on this matter is final unless appealed within 10 calendar days. Before we begin, do any of the commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regards to this item?
No.
Hearing none, we will then turn it over to staff. Jill, are you going to be doing the presentation?
Yes, Chair. I will go ahead and.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Again, the project before you is conditional use permit number 2020-06 for the Sprint Wireless Facility Renewal located at 3800 South Fairview Street. The request is to renew the entitlement for an existing 58-foot-tall wireless communication facility disguised as a palm tree. The facility currently provides cellular coverage and call capacity to a predominantly commercial, industrial, and single-family residential area of the city. And the request also includes proposed modifications to upgrading the equipment at the facility. Moving on to slide number four. On the left, you should see a site plan of the subject site, which is located at the southwest corner of MacArthur Boulevard and South Fairview Street. The facility, as indicated by an arrow and a dashed square, is located towards the westerly side of the site. And on the right is a photograph of the existing facility surrounded by other additional vegetation and palm trees. Slide number five is our analysis and recommendation. The original conditional use permit for the construction of this facility was approved in 2001, and it was designed to blend in with the existing landscaping. The Santa Ana Municipal Code requires that wireless facilities be renewed every 10 years, and as the current facility has passed its 10-year term, the applicant is required to apply for a new conditional use permit to maintain the current facility. The existing facility will continue to provide service to residents and visitors of the area. Staff has reviewed the plans and determined that through recommended conditions of approval and standards per the municipal code, the project will comply and be consistent with conditional use permit findings for approval. Staff recommends approval for conditional use permit 2020-6 as conditioned. And I have, I'm available for any questions. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Jill. Thank you, Jill. What we'll do is, I'll do a roll with the commissioners if you have any comments or questions of staff at this point in time. Commissioner Conno, any questions or comments?
No, no questions.
Commissioner Garcia.
No question.
Commissioner Nguyen.
No question. Thank you.
Commissioner Fan.
No, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera.
No question.
I have no questions at this point in time, so thank you, Jill, for the presentation. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
We did receive one inquiry from a resident in which staff responded to last week, and the resident was in support of the item. That letter has been posted to our website and distributed to the commission as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will now open the public hearing. Does the applicant have, is the applicant here tonight? And if so, do they have any, any comments that they'd like to make?
Alexander, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Am I, I just wanted to confirm, am I muted?
No, you are, you are not muted.
Okay, perfect. All right, perfect. Good evening, Commissioners. This is Alexander Liu of Core Development Services. I'm representing Crown Castle, who is the owner of the tower. Sprint is the wireless tenant on it. Our staff's presentation was pretty much spot-on. We're here just requesting a renewal of the conditional use permit so we can maintain operate, operations. And then also as part of it, we thought we'd piggyback the Sprint modification as part of it so they could upgrade their network. So I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, but I really have nothing else to add to staff's presentation.
Okay, we'll do another roll. Does Commissioner Conno, do you have any questions of Alexander?
Just on the page 114, just wanted to know what date was the picture taken on for the site, the site photo for exhibit 3?
Let me check that below. The photo date on those were in June.
Of this year?
Of last, of 2019.
Of 2019. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Garcia.
Not at this time.
Commissioner Nguyen.
No, thank you.
Commissioner Fan.
Yes, just a brief question. So I see that one of the conditions of approval is to, of course, fix and replace all the faded cell leaves and whatnot. Is there anything on the agenda to, I guess, paint, repaint the pole itself? It seems significantly lighter than the other trees around. I know it's never going to be perfect, but I was wondering if that was also part of the touch-up?
That can be, that can be accomplished.
Is the pole in pretty good condition? I don't feel, it doesn't really say in the staff report.
I'll direct that back over to staff.
Yes, through observations of, at the site, we felt that the pole was in good condition. But if the commissioner would like to add, to clarify, to the condition for painting of the pole as well, we could add that to condition number three.
I just wanted to make sure, I mean, looking at it, it looks fine. I just want to make sure that since we're up there, you know, fixing the palm leaves and all that other stuff, that we take care of whatever touch-ups that we need to do so that, you know, lasts the next 10 years.
Okay. Did you want, did you want to make a recommendation on that when you, when we talked to have a discussion, or do you want to make any other comments at this point in time?
I think that's fine. I think I would like to add it as a condition of approval in addition to, you know, replacing and updating the leaves. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, then let's move on. Commissioner Rivera.
Negative, no questions.
Okay, thank you. I have no questions myself. Alexander, I appreciate your, your support and input on this. At this point, at this point in time, Madam Secretary, do we have any, do we have any other speakers for this particular public comment?
So we're going to, Chair, if you could open the, make the statement that the public hearing is now open?
Oh, I thought I said that in my, my bed. Okay, the public hearing is now open. And does anyone, does anyone want to make any public comments at this point in time with regards to this item?
We have no one who has indicated their desire to comment on this matter.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we'll close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to the commission. And does the commission have any, any final questions or comments of staff? Commissioner Conno?
Um, no, it looks fine. I mean, page 1-10 already says that we should cover all deterioration and our faded cell leaves, and staff gave it the okay. The picture is fairly recent. It looks great, so I really don't have any other questions.
Okay, Commissioner Garcia?
No questions.
Commissioner Nguyen?
No question.
Commissioner Fan?
No question.
Would you like to make a motion, Commissioner Fan, that takes into consideration your, your request?
Yes, please. I'd like to make a motion to approve conditional use permit number 1220-6 with the addition that condition of approval number three include replacing or painting the pole if needed while they are reviewing the cell leaves.
Okay. Commissioner Rivera, do you have any comments?
Nope.
Okay, I don't have any comments at this point in time. Would someone like to make a second to Commissioner Fan's motion? Commissioner Rivera? Commissioner Rivera is the second? Okay. All right. Now we have a motion and a second. We've gone through the commission's comments. At this point in time, Madam Secretary, would you do a roll, roll call vote on this item?
Commissioner Conno.
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Aye.
Commissioner Fan.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Chair McLaughlin.
Aye.
Chair, motion passes 6-0 with Vice Chair Contreras Leo absent.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Excuse me. We'll move on to item number two. This is the time and place to consider item number two, conditional use permit number 2020-07 for project located at 2220 South Ritchie Street. Jill, are you going to be presenting at this point in time?
Yes, Chair, thank you.
Okay, let me just jump in here. One more thing. Please note that the decision on this matter is final unless appealed within 10 calendar days. Before we begin, do any of the commissioners wish to disclose or any items with regards, anything with regards to this item? Commissioner Conno?
No, nothing at this point.
Commissioner Garcia?
No.
Commissioner Nguyen?
No.
Commissioner Fan?
No.
Commissioner Rivera?
No.
Okay, I have nothing to disclose myself. Go ahead, Jill, it's yours to talk about.
Thank you, Chair, again, and Commissioners. The project before you is similar to the project you had just heard. For conditional use permit number 2020-07 at 2220 South Ritchie Street for the T-Mobile Wireless Facility Renewal, the request is to renew the entitlement for an existing 60-foot-high wireless communication facility disguised as a palm tree. The facility currently provides cellular coverage and call capacity to a predominantly industrial area of the city. Moving on to slide number nine. The site plan on your left shows the property, which is on the north side of Ritchie Street, and the facility, as indicated by an arrow and dashed square, is located towards the northwesterly part of the subject site. And on the right is a photograph of the existing facility that blends in with two existing mature palm trees, and the facility is surrounded by an eight-foot-high wrought iron fence. The original conditional use permit was approved in 1999 to allow the construction of the mono palm and equipment enclosure. The Santa Ana Municipal Code currently requires that wireless communications facilities be renewed every 10 years. As this entitlement has reached the 10-year lifespan, the applicant is required to apply for a new conditional use permit to maintain the entitlement for the facility. The existing facility will continue to provide service to residents and visitors of the area. Staff has determined, or has reviewed the plans and determined that through conditional, recommended conditions of approval and standards per the municipal code, the project will comply and be consistent with conditional use permit findings for approval. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 2020-06, sorry, -07 as conditioned. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Jill. We'll ask the commissioners if they have any questions at this point in time. Commissioner Conno, do you have any questions with Jill?
None at this time, no.
Commissioner Garcia?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Nguyen?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
No, no.
Commissioner Fan?
No question.
Yeah, I have no questions at this point in time either. Jill, thank you very much for your presentation. We will, Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
No comments have been received for this item.
Okay. At this point in time, we'll open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak on this matter?
Yes, this is Alexander Liu again, Core Development Services. Thank you again. As staff indicated, this is very similar to the item number one on the agenda. This one is strictly just for the renewal of the conditional use permit. No modifications are proposed in terms of the equipment. So I'm really here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have a question of Alexander at this point in time?
This is Commissioner Conno. Just the same question as the other apples fan. Just wanted to know the date that exhibit 3 site photo was taken. It's on page 2-14.
Yes, that was taken in October of last year, 2019.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Garcia, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Nguyen?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Fan?
No questions, but same comments as the previous item regarding the painting. But mostly, it looks good, but it's really light compared to all the other trees around, and so it doesn't blend in that far.
Okay. Commissioner Rivera?
No, no question.
Yeah, I don't have any questions at this point in time myself. Alexander, thank you for your, thank you for your time on this. We appreciate your support. At this point in time, is there anyone else that would like to make a comment in this public hearing? Do we have any, any, any notification, Madam Secretary?
If you would like to comment on this item, please press star nine now. Chair, no one has indicated their desire to speak on this matter.
Okay. With that said, uh, we'll close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to the commission. Do the commi, do the commissioners have any final comments or questions on this item? Commissioner Canno?
Um, I do have the same concerns with how light this pole is and also with the wall, um, adjacent to the location. Um, yeah, so just upgrading, uh, the painting. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Garcia?
Nothing.
Commissioner Nguyen?
I'm agree with, uh, Commissioner Ca, the, the, the body of the, of the bell tower, the color too light, does not matching with the, the surrounding area. Okay? Thank you.
Commissioner Fan?
Um, I would like to make an amendment to the conditions of approval to specifically condition number three. Um, or I just add it, I guess, because in this case, I would like to see that we add a condition that this is repainted to a darker brown that is more similar to this surrounding real palm tree rather than a light tan color.
Okay. Okay, so you're making added, uh, changes to condition number three, that's fine. Um, Commissioner Rivera, do you have any comments?
No, no comment.
And I don't have any comments at this point in time. So Commissioner Fan, would you like to make a motion on this item with regards to everything you just said?
Yes, uh, so I would like to make a motion to approve conditional use permit twenty twenty dash six zero seven with an added, a condition that the pole of the bell tower be painted a darker brown to be more consistent with the surrounding real palm tree in the area.
Okay. Do we have a second to that?
I have a second on motion. Oh, go ahead.
Okay, so the second is, can the win? All right. Madam Secretary, would you conduct a roll call vote at this point in time?
Commissioner Canno?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Commissioner Canno, aye.
Commissioner Fan?
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
Chair McLaughlin?
Aye.
Chair, a, a motion passes six zero with Contreras, with Cynthia Contreras Leo absent.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you. And, uh, now we, uh, we'll move on to item number three. Um, this is the time and place to consider item number three, final e, uh, environmental impact report number twenty twenty dash oh one, general plan amendment number twenty twenty dash oh two, and amendment application number twenty twenty dash oh one for project located at twenty-three hundred, twenty-three hundred and ten, and twenty-three hundred and twenty, South Red Hill Avenue. Please note that any decision on this matter is final unless appealed within ten calendar days. Uh, before we begin, do any of the commissioners have anything they wish to disclose, uh, with regards to this item? And I'm gonna do a roll call on that. So I'm gonna start with Commissioner Canno.
Um, yes, I was reached out by the applicant, and I was able to ask some questions, and my questions have been answered, um, in, in the last couple of days. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Garcia?
Uh, yes, uh, the applicant also reached out to me, and I said to the chairman, Gold Nick, and will leave this conference.
Okay. Commissioner Nguyen?
Yes, I was reached out by the applicant, uh, what they're wondering, do I have any questions? Wish I have none. So, um, I have another question. The, this application located twenty-three hundred, uh, to twenty-three twenty South Red Hill, but the, on the report in the, uh, uh, indicated a different address, um, on the plan, they say it's the Bowery, um, Bowery. Would you, uh, if somebody clarified that, they showed it to get a different address, no?
Well, let's, can we do, uh, let me, that's a good question. Let's hold that for a second. I'd like to continue to do our roll call on this item so that we can close on that with regards to disclosure.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, so, so, um, Commissioner Rivera, um, do you have anything to disclose?
Yes, I met with the applicant, uh, regarding the project to go over any questions.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Fan?
Uh, yes, I will have to legally recuse myself from this item due to a conflict of interest. And because of that, I will leave the room and will return after this item has been completed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Fan. Uh, I myself was contacted by, um, the applicant. Um, they asked if I had any questions. I responded in a text that at the time I did not have any questions. And if I did, I would follow up at this point in time. But, um, that was my contact with the applicant. Um, okay, so at this point in time, uh, Ali, I'm assuming you're gonna be presenting?
Chairman, uh, tonight's presentation will be led by Jerry Gavara, and we're both here to answer any questions that the commission may have. So we'll turn it over to Jerry at this time.
Okay, so Jerry, Jerry's presenting?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair, Man and Commissioners.
Go ahead.
Item number two, number three is requested by Jeremy Gold Nick representing Armist Capital. The applicant's requesting certification and adoption of an environmental impact report, approval of a general plan amendment, and a zone change for the property located at twenty-three hundred, twenty-three ten, and twenty-three twenty South Red Hill Avenue in order to facilitate the development of a mixed-use village, as being called the Bowery. Uh, moving on to slide number fourteen. The project site is located at the southwest corner of Red Hill Avenue and Warner Avenue, and is highlighted in red on the aerial view, and measures approximately fourteen point five acres. The property is currently developed with three industrial buildings, one of which contains a temporary shelter known as a link. The property currently has a general plan land use destination of professional and administration office, and a zoning destination of light industrial. The applicant's requesting to change the general plan destination to district center, and the zoning district to a specific development, here referred to as specific development number ninety-six. The site is surrounded by other industrial uses to the north, south, and west, and the city of Tustin to the east. Moving on to page or slide number fifteen. The project consists of the demolition of the current, or the, the demolition of the three existing industrial buildings, and the construction of a mixed-use development with six buildings containing eleven hundred units, eighty thousand square feet of commercial space, four point two acres of onsite open space and amenities areas, and twenty-six hundred parking spaces, of which four hundred will be for the commercial uses, and the remaining twenty-two hundred spaces will be, um, cert, will be to serve the residential component of the project, which gives you a parking ratio of two point oh per unit. Moving on to slide number sixteen. Um, this is the proposed site plant. Warner Avenue is to the right, and Red Hill Avenue is at the bottom of the slide. The site will be accessible from two primary entrances, one along Warner Avenue, and the other along Red Hill Avenue, and a secondary entrance along Warner Avenue, which leads into a parking structure. The project site will be broken up by an onsite two-way street, and a patio between Buildings A and B. And it's also broken up by four major buildings, Building A, B, and C, and D, and two freestanding pads which are along the primary plaza area. Building A will contain two hundred and eighty units, twelve hundred square feet of commercial space, and a thirteen thousand square foot amenity roof deck on top of the building. Building B will contain two hundred and forty-four units, twenty-four thousand square feet of commercial space, and eleven thousand square feet of amenity roof deck. Building C will contain three hundred and twenty-two units, twenty thousand square feet of commercial space, and a seven hu, seven thousand eight hundred square foot courtyard. Building D will contain two hundred and fifty-four units, no commercial space, and will contain a fourteen thousand square foot amenity roof deck as well. Of the total residential units, twenty-one percent will be studios, fifty-two percent will be one bedrooms, twenty-six percent will be two bedrooms, and one percent will be three bedrooms. Moving on to slide number seventeen. This is an enlarged site plan to the primary plaza and commercial square footage. The smaller commercial pad building will have a total of four thousand square feet, and the larger commercial pad building will have a total of twenty thousand square feet. The plaza will include outdoor furniture such as benches, dining tables, lighting, and water features. Moving on to slide number eighteen. This is a rendering view of the corner of Red Hill Avenue and Warner Avenue, which will contain the highest peak of the development at ninety-four feet and set, or seven stories. Building heights for the development will range between fifty-six feet and ninety-five feet, or five stories to seven stories. The architectural design of the building has been designed in a cohesive manner and include metal trims, awnings, railings, slats, and cladding, and brick veneer and stucco finishes. Moving on to slide number nineteen. This is a rendering view of the patio between Buildings A and B. Moving on to slide number twenty. This is a rendering view of the interior street facing, um, uh, Red Hill Avenue. Moving on to slide number twenty-one. This is a rendering of the retail plaza, um, looking towards the, um, north of the property. Now we're moving on to slide number twenty-two. Project analysis. The site plan has been designed to break the project site up into village blocks. The central pedestrian patio links the rear portions of the site to the commercial area, providing a major community amenity and enhancing opportunities for interaction and gathering places. The commercial component of the, of the project is amongst the city's largest, um, in recent, um, developments. For example, um, the Heritage as well as City Place. The parking for the project is also consistent with other mixed-use areas in the city such as Metro East and Harbor Specific Plan. Creative use of lifts and commercial value maximizes site planning for pedestrians and minimizes auto-centric, um, developments or automobile dominance. Moving on to page or to slide number twenty-three. The project is consistent with the allowable density range of District Center intent and character of District Center general plan land use destination. The project is also consistent with similar projects in the vicinity as mentioned to the Heritage, as well as other projects in the city of Irvine and Tustin. The project is also consistent with Goals Two and Four of the general plan land use element that encourage diverse housing opportunities for residents of Santa Ana, and will contin, contribute to the production of affordable housing units through in-lu fees. The project will create new permanent as well as temporary jobs. Moving on to slide number twenty-four. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, an environmental impact report was prepared for the project. Per SEQA, agencies must consider and disclose potential environmental impacts before taking action on discretionary applications. The draft EIR for the project was circulated for forty-five days from January third, twenty twenty, to February eighteen, twenty twenty. A mitigation monitoring and reporting program has been prepared for the project, which contains mitigation measures to address impacts to air quality, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, transportation, and tribal resources. The ER identified five significant and unavoidable impacts associated to air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, and transportations. Um, staff did receive two notifications from two law firms that has been distributed to the, um, commissioners, as well as posted it on our, our website. Um, after reviewing the letters from both, um, law firms, comments on the final EIR do raise some other concerns with regards to, um, impacts of indoor air quality, traffic, homeless, and hazardous and hazardous materials. As mentioned, all of these items have been addressed as part of the final environmental impact report. Moving on to slide number twenty-five. An economic and fiscal analysis for the project was conducted by AECom. The analysis compared the proposed project against an industrial prototype that could be built under current zoning and general plan land use destinations. In addition, the study analyzed key areas in residential, industrial, and retail market assessments, development feasibility, and economic and fiscal impacts. The project will result in net positive fiscal impacts to the city, and will create approximately twelve, twelve hundred new jobs, of which three hundred and forty-nine could be captured by Santa Ana residents. The project will also result in one billion dollar surplus revenue for the city annually. And with that, moving on to slide number twenty-six. Um, staff recommendation, staff recommends that the plan commission recommend to the city council, um, approval and certification of EIR number twenty twenty dash zero one, approval of general plan amendment number twenty twenty dash zero two to change the general plan land use destination of the property from professional and administration office, PEO, to district center, and approve amendment application number twenty twenty dash zero one to change the zoning of the properties from light industrial to specific development number ninety-six. That concludes staff's presentation, and we're here to answer any of your questions.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Um, Commissioner Canno, do you have any questions, uh, staff?
Um, just on the last statement you made about the one billion surplus, that is the full, uh, budget for the city of Santa Ana, is that, just wanted to clarify.
Commissioner Canno, it is one million dollars that will be generated through the development in terms of, um, sales tax and property taxes to the city.
Just, okay, we double-checked the numbers for property tax, sales tax, and other tax that will be, um, gathered on a yearly basis. I have some numbers, but just wanted to double-check, um.
Commissioner Canno, what is your, your question is?
Uh, the amount of, of revenue that will be received, um, from this project that amounts in property tax, sales tax, and other taxes.
Right. Are you asking, is that included in the one million, or is that?
Yeah.
Okay. And the answer is Jerry?
That is correct. It is included, Commissioner, um, Canno, as, um, chairman. So the one million dollars is surplus, so that is after expenditures that the city will have to contribute to the development of the project.
Okay, thank you.
What is, what is one, what, what is one million dollars in surplus mean? Uh, that, I'm not quite sure I understand the, the term surplus.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, you, I get, we get what you're saying, but it's, surplus to me means extra. So, um, if, if, if the expenses are one thing and the, and the, and revenue is another thing, the net of the two, it, it ends up being a million dollars. Um, so the, the income from that is a million dollars, not a surplus.
Uh, thank you, Chairman and Commission. So, um, to clarify, this is Ali. So the net, uh, revenue, so net positive revenue to the city, per this study, would be approximately one million annually. So that includes two point five million in annual revenue from the project. So that's things like property tax, uh, revenue increase, sales tax revenues generated by the fact that this has a significant commercial component, but also takes into account- but also takes into account one point five million dollars in expenditures. Those are the costs that the city incurs to provide service to the projects, such as police, uh, and other utilities. So when you take into account two point five positive, less one point five million in expenditures, you're left with net positive of one million. So to clarify, it's, it's not, it's not a surplus per se, it's just one million net positive revenue.
Got it. Thank you so much for the clarification.
So, the, so therefore, therefore, um, we're looking at, uh, two point five million dollars in property tax and sales tax. And the outlook for that is against one point five million dollars in expenses, which is city services?
Chairman, that is correct.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Garcia, do you have any questions of staff?
I do, thank you, Chairman. I, uh, saw a what, for additional time to survive comments on, uh, the I, EIR, um, response to the supplemental report that came out a couple of days ago, and I could be, uh, misstating that. But have you guys, what's the communication, uh, like with the city of Tustin? Uh, and what specifically are the concerns, the highlights for it?
Commissioner Garcia, thank you for your question. Um, unfortunately, the first part of it cut out for a substantial portion. Do you mind repeating your question in full?
Yes. Uh, so this afternoon, we saw a letter come in from the city of Tustin, uh, and they're requesting that we hold a meeting of decisions so that they can address some of, uh, the EIR, uh, mitigation, uh, issues and then some of these unavoidable, uh, concerns. The question is, can you highlight what the specific concerns are that you know already? And what have any communications we've had to state so that we can at least, uh, have an understanding of the issue?
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. So we received a communication from the city of Tustin's Planning Division and the city as a whole, expressing, uh, concern about the timing of the project and the amount of time afforded for reviewing the final EIR. Uh, there were several opportunities provided to the public, including our neighboring jurisdictions, such as Tustin and Irvine, uh, to participate in the environmental review process, including a scoping meeting, uh, publishing a notice of preparation. Those were both in summer twenty nineteen, as well as, um, releasing a notice of completion of the draft EIR in January twenty twenty. Uh, the forty-five day public review period of that, um, draft EIR, which staff released after the holidays to ensure that everyone was back at work and able to review during the full forty-five day period. Uh, and then the preparation of the final EIR. So, uh, state law requires that the final EIR and responses to comments be made available and finalized ten days prior to the public hearing. And for this project, we managed to complete that four days ahead of schedule, so it was actually fourteen days ahead of tonight's meeting. Um, Tustin's concerns, not to overly, uh, simplify, but for the sake of this discussion, have centered on the amount of park space provided by the project and the impacts of introducing residents on that edge of Santa Ana to, um, the impacts of parks in Tustin, as well as the, uh, traffic analyses and impacts to roadways in the Tustin legacy specific plan. And so, uh, to clarify, the response to comments that were prepared and finalized for the EIR, uh, once again, supported the traffic analyses performed for the project, and then clarified that this project actually onsite provides what the city's normal ratio of parkland would be per resident, uh, which would be four point two zero acres for this amount of residential. And, uh, the project site, it was clarified in the response to comment that the project site provides four point two one acres. So it's actually a little bit more than the city's minimum of onsite parkland, and therefore, uh, one could reasonably expect that the residents of this project would have ample opportunities to recreate onsite. And should they wish to go offsite, there's actually about eighty-eight acres, I believe, identified in the final EIR in the city of Santa Ana. Should they cross over the fifty-five and go into Santa Ana, there'd be eighty-eight acres, I believe, within three miles of the project site, um, for recreational opportunities. So that's a brief summary of the concerns and the responses and the timeline for public, uh, interaction on this EIR.
Commissioner Garcia, do you have any, uh, is there any other questions there?
Just a follow-up, uh, just to clarify that I understood correctly. Did you say that, uh, part of their concern is the use of Tustin Parks?
Correct. They identified a concern that the residents from this community, um, would be utilizing city of Tustin parks across the street.
And, um, another, uh, unrelated question. The, uh, report at some point, does it be, the project would achieve the parking rate, parking ratio required by the city by, uh, with the use of parking lifts? Uh, am I reading that, um, correctly? And it's so, can you, can you explain how it's going to work? And what is, you have an overflow of valet parking, like, has that been thought out from a logistical standpoint, and how does that affect the, uh, the parking ratio?
Thank you, Commissioner. So, uh, just a few, um, items to provide a response. Uh, the first, uh, most important component is that this applicant and the city have finalized a parking management plan for the project to ensure that this isn't just a project that's constructed and walked away from with zero management strategies of onsite parking. Um, so now, within that parking management plan, there's provisions to address some of the concerns that you've raised, or at least the questions that you raised. Um, to clarify, the valet parking onsite would only be for the commercial component. So the valet would supplement the constructed parking spaces for the commercial component to help it achieve four hundred parking spaces, which is the city's general retail service parking requirement, um, in most of its shopping centers. Then for the residential, the parking would provide just shy of the two thousand two hundred parking spaces that would be provided at the rate of two point oh per unit. And when I say just shy, it's because the amount of constructed spaces, I believe, is one thousand nine hundred eighty-eight spaces. And, um, the rooftops of the parking structures, a handful of the parking structures, would be pre-designed and pre-engineered to allow for installation of two hundred and twelve parking lifts that with the help of a parking management plan and onsite management staff that works essentially twenty-four hours a day at these large communities, uh, would enable residents to utilize those lifts to, in effect, have two hundred and twelve lifts plus nineteen eighty-eight parking spaces constructed to reach two point oh parking spaces per residential unit.
So that's, that's a great, um, it's, I guess, great plan, but then it begs the following question, which is, would they then, would we then have eyesore on the rooftop?
I'm sorry, could, could you, uh, what's the comment?
From aesthetic standpoint, would these park lifts, uh, then create an eyesore on the rooftop? So, have we considered what that's going to look like aesthetically?
So, um, that is a good concern, and whenever staff reviews any development project that comes through, uh, the plans have to conform to the city's design guidelines, which require screening of any sort of equipment, or, um, you know, in this case, hydraulic equipment or lifts on a rooftop. Uh, so the parking structures would be designed to ensure that you cannot see these lifts from a reasonable vantage point on the public right-of-way. And I believe there's a development standard in the specific development zone that's been drafted for your consideration that requires the parking structures to be designed in high-quality materials and, um, take into account the views from surrounding properties and the streets and all that.
Can you, um, can you tell me what reasonable would look like? From what kind of reasonable distance?
So typically, in the city, the standard, uh, rooftop screening requirement is that a six-foot-tall individual should not be able to see any sort of rooftop equipment, such as lifts or air conditioner units, things like that, uh, standing three hundred feet away from the project site. So six-foot-tall individual from three hundred feet away.
Good, thank you. That is all for now.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Nguyen, do you have questions at this point in time, staff?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera, do you have any questions of staff at this point in time?
Uh, I do, actually. I have a quick question as far as, uh, what the, what did the parking, um, numbers for the retail look like prior to, I think, when we did our, um, when we did the study the previous time? I know that the, the parking numbers increased. I was just curious what the parking prior was.
Uh, Commissioner.
Ali?
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll, um, I don't recall what the earlier parking, uh, ratio proposed was when we held the work-study session, um, but I should be able to dig up that information, um, while we speak. But Jerry, do you have any information? Yeah, Chairman, I apologize. I don't have that information handy right now, but I can certainly try to dig it up.
Okay, no problem. I'm just curious as far as, uh, what the increase was, uh, because I know that there was a change to increase the retail parking number. Um, so I'm just curious what the prior one was.
Commissioner Rivera, um, the number for the commercial didn't increase. It stayed at one space per every, um, two hundred square feet, so it's a total four hundred square feet. But what did change was the way of, of how they're going to be managing, um, the parking. So before, they were providing a little bit more valet services, so they decreased that. What the applicant did in this revised settlement plan is actually increase the residential component, uh, parking ratio.
Got it, okay, so just, okay, I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions at this moment, Phillips?
Nope, none.
Okay, um, I have a few questions, um, and I'm not sure where they best suit to, uh, best suited to get responses on, but, uh, one item, uh, I'm going to go back to the parkland discussion, and according to what was said in the EIR and in the proposal, uh, we had four point two acres, it was, um, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-three square feet of parkland and public, uh, areas. Um, but then at the other side of the, it discussed this land is also being private. So, the question I have is, if I'm looking at four point two acres of green space and, you know, parkland, how do I get there from, from here with the equation? Because, um, you know, like your paseo is a huge walkway that goes from one building to another building, but it's a walkway. Is that parkland, or is that a walkway?
So, uh, Chair, uh, Chairman, thanks for that question. I'll clarify by, um, just saying that the open space provided onsite is not parkland in the sense of, um, city-owned parkland that is completely accessible to the public. So this is onsite open space. But for the sake of analyzing the issues, such as impacts to surrounding communities or, you know, residents' ability to have ample recreation, um, you know, within close proximity of their residences, that's why the comparison was drawn between what the code would require in terms of a developer to construct for parks versus, uh, what is provided onsite by this, uh, project. And the project, of course, will still, because it's residential, uh, mixed use, will still have to pay parks fees as well, uh, to go into a pot for improving.
I get that, I get that. That's not what I'm, I'm going off the municipal code, and I'm asking the question based on the municipal code, and, and it's, and if I'm not mistaken, the way it was described in the documentation is it said parkland and public, and it, and I'm just asking the question and also brought in the fact that it could be, it could also be assumed to be, um, private. So, the question is, of the one hundred and eighty-three thousand square feet plus that we're talking about, uh, open space, what is that? Is it the walkways between the buildings? Is that open space? Is it the decks that are, the decks that are, um, the patio that's on a house, on a unit itself? Is that part of that four point two acres?
Uh, so Chairman, that one hundred and eighty-three thousand square feet that you're referencing, that includes all, um, onsite open space areas for the project. So that's open space areas like the paseo.
I get that. So that's, so the question is, what, what's considered to be part of that number is, is open? Is it all of the walkways? If that's, I'm just, I, I'm looking at it from the standpoint of, where's the green space that people would have? I mean, there's, there's a pet, there's a location for pets. I saw that. There were things like that. I'm just trying to understand, because this was, this is playing into the discussion of meeting a requirement of the Santa Ana Municipal Code. How are we meeting that requirement?
Uh, so Chairman, to answer your question, you are correct that this, uh, this number includes areas like balconies, the paseo, roof decks, on-the-ground open space areas, uh, the plaza adjacent to the commercial component, uh, things like that. Uh, for the commission's benefit, I believe the full plan set also includes an open space exhibit that visually depicts how that number was calculated.
I didn't catch the last half of the, last bit of your comment there, Ali.
Uh, the full plan set that's available for view also includes an open space exhibit that visually depicts how that one hundred and eighty-three thousand square feet of open area is, um, being provided onsite.
And where is that located in the documentation?
That's in the full project plans that are available on the city's website and are linked to through the, uh, through the packet that's posted on the agenda.
Okay, well, that's something I didn't, I'm not aware of where it was, or what's available on that. Okay, um, next question I had was that, um, the original, the plan that was given to us last week, uh, or maybe two weeks ago, basically, it said that there was eleven hundred and fifty units that were basically studio for one bedroom, two bedroom, one bedroom, two bedroom, yes. And, um, it was eleven hundred and fifty units, um, it's now eleven hundred units, and it's one bedroom, uh, excuse me, studio, one bedroom, two bedroom, and three bedrooms. And, um, I'm just curious as to, you know, why the dynamic changed. I can see one bedroom, two bedroom, that, you know, brings into play, you know, couples, families, uh, small families and things like that, but when we start getting into three bedrooms, we're getting into large families and, and possibly two families and things like that, which could have an impact. Um, I'm just, you know, what is the, what is the targeted community at this point in time? Because I, I could see it with the studio, one bedroom, two bedroom. I can't see it now with the, with the addition of three bedrooms. Not that it's a, not that it's a big number, but it's, it's a conceptual situation right now.
Chairman, um, so the applicant's proposing fifteen, uh, three-bedroom units, so that's fifteen in total. Um, staff since the beginning of the seminar of this, um, application was requesting the introduction or the incorporation of two bedrooms and three bedrooms to pretty much serve some of those families in Santa Ana that do have a larger, um, household.
Okay, um, next question I had is, is that I, I remember reading in the documentation several weeks ago that there were ninety-four, uh, electric vehicle stations. Um, how do they play into the twenty-six hundred parking spaces that are being, being talked about at this point in time? Are they part of the commercial, are they part of residential? Is it, is it mixed? Is it, is it fee-based? How does that work?
Chairman, that is determined by the California Building Code. Um, it's a certain percentage of the required number of spaces. I don't know that off the top of my head, but, um, the electrical vehicle charging stations will be to serve both the residential and commercial component of the project.
Unfortunately, you, you're not coming through clear, but that's okay. Let me try to, let me try to restate what you said. let me try to restate what you said. It's a requirement of the state, it's a federal state requirement that we have electric vehicle charging stations. And my question is, is the 94 that identified in addition to the 2,600 parking spaces, or is included in the 2,600 parking spaces?
It's-
And is included in it, where is it located? Is it located in the commercial, or is it located in the residential?
It's part of the 2,600 parking spaces, Chairman, and it is mostly within the commercial component, although they do have some along the residential component of the parking structures.
Okay. All right. The, the other question, I share the same question that Commissioner Garcia shares, and that is with regards to Tustin looking for additional time on this. I share that same, that same need from the standpoint of the request, because it did, you know, of their timing, plus a few other letters that have been received. One was received this afternoon, which is about eighty pages long of legal documents that came in. So, that's another concern that I have at this point in time. The other thing, and this is just kind of a question that no one seems to have the, the answer on, but, you know, Rico, Rico had a copier facility over, the current site is where Rico had their copier business and several other businesses that they had. And, you know, I noticed that in one of the, one of the buildings, they handled toner and things of that nature. And having, having been in this business myself for about eighteen years with Xerox, and Xerox had a refurbishing facility down in Irvine, which was off of Jamboree, and one of the things that they did is they refurbished copiers, just like Rico does and other companies do. And one issue that came up was the fact that the process of refurbishing the machines was done with trichlorethylene, and the trichlor was absorbed into the ground below. And my question is, who and where did they do a, a study of the, the ground and groundwater? Because it is, the area does have somewhat of a groundwater table that's of issue, and that was in one of the documents that was provided in the EIR. But I'm also curious as to whether or not any, any testing has been done on the, on the soils at this point in time, because what I read in the EIR, and I read in the mitigating monitoring situation, was the fact that, you know, in, in the construction of and in the removal of the, the current building and the building of the new buildings, that the soils would be tested. But I'm asking right now is whether or not the soils have been tested for ground contamination, because there's also other facilities. You know, I've looked at the DCFC, DTFC, sorry, and they, they showed a number of facilities in the area that also had some contamination issues. Being a manufacturing facility, I'm not surprised, because that's the nature of the beast in some respects. So, just wanted to see if I could get clarification on that.
Chairman, thank you. Whenever there is a proposed change of land use from a non-residential use to a residential use, such as this case, substantial pre-testing is required as part of preparation of the environmental documents that you've been reviewing. And those collectively, collectively are called Phase One and Phase Two Environmental Site Assessments, or ESAs. And so, a project normally requires a Phase One to be done ahead of time, but in this case, the Phase One and Phase Two were performed to do exactly what you were describing, to test the existing soil situations, because of the acknowledging that this has been an industrial site, and the conversion to residential necessitated that testing. So, that testing did reveal that there were traces of, or there could be traces of asbestos and lead-based paint, as well as to 900 cubic yards of contaminated soil. This is really common on existing non-residential sites. And so, the testing revealed that, and basically requires through the mitigation monitoring program, conditions of the project, that that 900 cubic yards be excavated and removed from the site and replaced with clean soil that meets the state's minimum requirements in order to handle the conversion from non-residential to residential use. Even if there were no EIR, and even if there were no discretionary action, and this were a project proposed and allowed by right, state law in California, because we have some of the most stringent environmental standards, would require this sort of testing and remediation anyway. So, the EIR and the mitigation measures sort of memorialize that state law and make sure that they apply to this project.
That's great. Can some, somehow can we point in that direction? Because I've, I've gone through the documentation today, and I went through it partially for a very short period of time with Vince, and we were looking through it to try to find where that might show up, but it really didn't pop out in the, I looked under hazardous material and gases and gas emissions, and did not see anything of that nature. So, that's just a concern that I, yeah, I wanted to bring forward.
Thank you, Chairman. So, the easiest sort of reference to it would be to review mitigation measure HAZ-1, which requires the preparation of the Soil Management Plan, or an SMP, to basically be used by the site's construction workers and management to review, remove, and dispose of the hazardous soil that I was just referencing in a manner that's consistent with state law and all the various state agencies that are involved in this sort of endeavor. And then, and from there, the draft environmental impact report, as well as response to comments, go further to provide the background information that would highlight all the details that I was mentioning earlier about the 900 cubic yards and the asbestos and the lead-based paints.
Yeah, I saw that. That I saw. I didn't see any, any sort of testing, though, but that's what I was talking about. Okay. All right. At this point in time, that's all I have for questions and comments for the moment. We'll go on from there. Do any of the other commissioners, do any of the other commissioners have any other questions they'd like to ask the staff at this point in time? Commissioner Kano?
I would like to, I would like to make a question for council. Do we have someone available for them?
From the city council?
No, for legal.
Legal, yes. Lisa, you're here. Lisa?
Just one moment. Let's see if she's muted. One moment, please. Oh, there we go. Lisa, you may go ahead. Lisa Stork.
Angie, Angie, you have Lisa on the line now.
Perfect. So, we received the last-minute letters from the City of Tustin and the, the legal firms that we just got a couple hours ago. So, just wanted to double-check if there will be any legal repercussions if we send that to city council, given that last time with an applicant received same letters from the carpentry association, and it would later draw the whole CEQA challenges. So, to double-check into what had happened in the past and how we can ask the city council to look at those issues.
Lisa?
Chair, I don't believe she is able to speak up at this moment. If we can come back to that question, and we will try to contact her on our end.
Okay, let's do that. Angie, you're okay? We'll, we'll-
Yeah, definitely.
... your question until we, all right. Commissioner Garcia, any, any questions you have for staff at this moment?
No additional questions at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Nguyen?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, I have no questions at this point in time. Ali, Jerry, thank you very much for the presentation. Commissioner- Secretary, did we, did we receive any written communication on this item at this point in time?
Chair, before we go into written communication, we do have Lisa Stork on line now, so she can address the question by Commissioner Kano.
Okay, sounds good.
Lisa, can you hear us?
All right, Chair, I think we're having some technical difficulties, so let's continue until we are able to get her on. So, moving on to the question that you asked about written communication, we did receive four letters on this item, which have all been posted to our website. Two of the letters were in opposition, and two of the letters were general comments requesting continuance of the item.
Okay.
No other comments have been received.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. We will now open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak on this matter at this point in time?
Applicant, if you'd like to speak, you may do so now. Just one moment, we're going.
Hello, this is Will Weinkenhocker. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Mr. Chairman, honorable commissioners, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Will Weinkenhocker, and I'm speaking on behalf of the applicant. And joining me on this call with the applicant team is Mr. Jeremy Agulnich, Mr. RC Alley from Architects Orange, and Mr. Richard Barretto with Lynn Scott Law and Green Traffic Engineering. Given the telephonic format, I will keep my comments brief, so that we have plenty of time to answer questions. And first, I'd like to express appreciation to planning staff for their responsiveness and support during the processing of this project. Project conception, staff has been incredibly accessible and thorough with guidance and feedback. We appreciate that. And even under the current circumstances with social distancing and work disruption, staff has continued to be responsive and connected. We'd also like to thank the planning commission, as it has provided sound feedback through previous public meetings and discussions with various members. So, we appreciate your thoughtful comments, and we trust their latest metal reflects your and your staff's guidance. I would like to make one clarifying comment to the AECOM report that discusses fiscal, fiscal benefits. I would like to confirm, or have staff confirm, my understanding of the report is that it is a comparison. So, when we discuss the two-and-a-half million-dollar surplus and a million and a half expense to the city and derive the million-dollar surplus, it is my understanding that that is a comparison between our project Bowery and a contemplated project of a industrial, commercial use built out at its kind of maximum capacity. But it is not a comparison of the Bowery compared to the site's current office use and the economics that are, are coming from its current use. Could staff confirm that? Because I think that's an important distinction.
Chair, would you like the staff to respond?
Sure, that'd be fine. Jerry, Ali, either of you?
That is correct, Will.
Okay, what's, okay, good. Just wanted to make sure that point was, was made clear. The current use is far less of an economic driver to the city, and the, the numbers would change dramatically if there was a comparison between our current Bowery project and the current office use. And with that clarification, I would just like to conclude by saying the applicant team is extremely excited to bring Bowery to the City of Santa Ana, and we're looking forward to being a part of the future of the city. And I'll now turn it back to staff or planning commissioners, as it may be.
Okay, thank you, Will, for that. I'm just going to bring one comment up, because this is something that just started to fester as far as the basic title of the Bowery for this project. You know, the thing that comes to my mind, and I grew up in New York as a, as a young person, and, you know, the Bowery is a, is a Dutch word for pasture or, or farmland, which there were a lot of pastures and farmlands in New York City back in the days when the Dutch were there. But the other side of the coin is, the term Bowery in my lifetime was skid row. And it was a, it was not the place to be. It was the place to be out of. And, you know, I'm not sure that, you know, the term Bowery, you know, like I said, in my, in my lifetime, has been skid row, homeless, and it has been, now in the last five, 10, 15 years, like there are other parts of New York that have been gentrified in many respects. You know, Brooklyn is different, Chelsea is different, Bowery's different. It's just that it, it connotates in my mind, like I said, homeless and skid row. It's your choice. You guys made the choice. I'm just bringing that as a, as a, just a basic comment. With that, Commissioner Kano, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Yes. I'm just wanted to check what was, how was the relationship with the City of Tustin, and when you guys started communicating with them, how did that go? Wanted to get a picture of that communication.
Yes, this is Will with the applicant. I can say, our communication has generally been through the EIR process, as the, the EIR process requires certain notifications. So, my understanding is that we noticed the city, and I did see an email where they indicated they did not have proper notice, and I would just ask again, clarifying question for staff, if they could confirm that the notice went out of procedure.
Chair, would you like staff to respond?
That's right.
Would you like staff to respond to the applicant's question?
That'd be fine.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, the proper notification protocols were followed, and we used certified mail, which actually indicated that someone at the City of Tustin signed for the receipt of the package on, I believe, Monday, May 4. Unfortunately, due to COVID-19 disruptions, it could be that between the individual at City of Tustin who signed for it and the package reaching the principal planner's desk on the 7th, maybe there were some internal disruptions at their city hall. But nonetheless, our certified mail records show that on Monday, the 4th, the package was signed for by someone at Tustin City Hall.
Okay. Commissioner Kano, do you have any other questions?
No, just wanted to check that, you know, since the city and the applicant did everything they could, and they followed the procedures, just wanted to double-check that timing and everything. So, thank you for clarifying.
Okay. Commissioner Garcia?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Commissioner Nguyen?
I have no questions, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera? No, I don't have any. Okay. I have no questions at this point in time. Thank you, Will. Appreciate your time, and we will now ask if there are any other individuals that would like to comment on this item at this point in time. Madam Secretary, do you have any, any people from a public hearing perspective that would like to speak on this matter?
If you are participating by conference call and wish to speak, please press star nine now. Chair, we do have one caller at this time. Caller with the last three numbers of 331, please state your name, your position on the matter, and your comment. You may go ahead now.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Rebecca Davis, and I represent Supporters' Alliance for Environmental Responsibility. We submitted written comments earlier today, and those comments list numerous ways in which the final EIR for this project is insufficient by SEQA. And we're therefore requesting that the city not recommend that the EIR be approved today, but instead be sent back to staff for revisions and ultimately recirculation. I'm just going to touch briefly on a few points in our letter, given the limited amount of time. One of the significant issues that we, as our experts noted, involved the traffic impact of the project. And we think that there are numerous ways in which the traffic has been significantly understated. And one of the most important issues is that the traffic analysis relies on an incorrect baseline. So the traffic use is a baseline condition in which the project site is fully occupied as being used as an industrial park. And based on that use, the study found that existing traffic is equal to 1,326 daily trips. But it's actually been years since the site has been fully occupied and been used as an industrial park. And in reality, of the 212,000 square feet of building space at the site, 119,000 is being used for warehousing, 5,000 for research and development, 30,000 as homeless shelter, and 53,000 is being used as vacant space. So when our traffic expert calculated the existing traffic baseline based on those existing uses as required by SEQA, he found that existing conditions would generate only 335 daily trips rather than 1,326. So overstating the baseline traffic ends up skewing the calculation of what additional traffic will be generated by the project when compared to the baseline. This error alone results in the EIR underestimating traffic generated from the project by 21%. And I also wanted to briefly touch on the issue discussed earlier by Chairman, which is about the hazardous materials that are currently contaminated in the project site. The EIR does not disclose that the project site is on the Cortezy list. This is despite the fact that CTSC made a specific comment noting that the project is in fact on the list. And the mitigation measure that is proposed to address the significant contamination on the site is a classic example of deferred mitigation. The EIR defers preparation of a soil management plan until after SEQA review is completed, without imposing any substantive candor, and without providing for any public review. Making matters worse, there's actually no requirement that the soil management plan be even submitted to the city or any other agency for approval, so the applicant in essence is itself determining what constitutes significant mitigation, or sufficient mitigation. But to conclude, we request that the commission decline to recommend certification of the EIR and project approval.
Caller, three minutes has been reached.
Thank you.
Rebecca, thank you very much for your comments. Are there any other comments at this point in time?
If you'd like to speak on this matter, please press star nine now. I'll wait a few seconds to see if we have anyone else. Chair, no one has indicated that they'd like to speak on this item.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Having no further public hearing comments, we will close the public hearing at this point in time. We will bring it back to the commission for questions and discussion. Commissioner Kano, have you got anything that you would like to discuss or say at this point in time?
Um, no. Just waiting for Lisa to answer my last question.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Lisa?
Oh, finally. You can hear me? Yeah. Okay. So your questions were about the letter from the City of Tustin and the two letters from the attorney law firm, is that correct?
Yes. So I remember last time, the same union, the Cortezy Union, they sent in a challenge to the SEQA report that we had, and it was done last minute, and then it was dropped. And, you know, at this point, I don't feel like penalizing the applicant or city when they did everything right for a report that was turned in last minute. So would there be any legal repercussions to the city if we do move forward with this project to move to city council for review?
Okay. So as you know, anybody can sue anybody for anything. We've seen this quite often, where the labor unions or the attorneys send the letters at the last minute before the hearing, and we don't have sufficient time to reply. We feel that all of the issues that were raised were addressed in the EIR and the statement of overriding considerations, as well as in the MMRP. So we feel confident with the consultant work that we had done with the traffic studies and with the EIR. But again, as you know, anybody can sue anybody. We do have indemnification language in all of the documents, so that if there was any legal challenge that you're concerned about, the developer would have to cover those costs, just to let you know.
Okay. Thank you so much, Lisa, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. Commissioner Garcia?
Just, I think, questions that would be for staff and for future consideration. I would like some more time to address some of the issues that were raised late in the game, even as Lisa mentioned, it is a part of the game. I think ultimately, we have the responsibility to do our due diligence on all of these issues as well. But, yeah, I have a question in terms of what would the mercy, how would it go, if it's a very homeless shelter, and it was, I think that would be my initial thought right now.
Okay. Commissioner Nguyen?
I have no question, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera? I don't have any questions either. Okay. I think I've covered pretty much, there are things, my understanding is, is that staff is going to check on whether or not there's going to be, there's an airport land use approval that has to occur, and there's a meeting supposedly next week, is that correct? Vince?
Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, yes, the Red Hill Airport Land Management Meeting schedule is on next Thursday afternoon.
Okay. And I guess, I mean, I share, I share what Commissioner Garcia has said, is that we have, there's been a few things that have been brought up here. The City of Tustin asking for a continuance of two weeks, and also requests for a continuance on some of the other people. I would not be adverse to at least proposing a continuance for two weeks, which would be at the end of May, so that we could get some of these questions to, I feel my uncomfort level is focused around this open space that's been discussed as four acres of open space, and I really don't know how to assess that from this point on. We're talking about some of the traffic impacts and everything else, and one of the things that I noticed in the EIR, which I didn't quite follow, is we have 1,100 units, and essentially, the occupancy, maybe I read this wrong, but the occupancy, full occupancy of the facility was 1,457 people. I don't understand that in relationship to the breakout of the different one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom studios, et cetera. So those are some concerns that I honestly don't think the answer was clear. I see the benefit, I think the one discussion that Will brought up a minute ago is an interesting discussion, but the question at the end of the day is, how much money comes in from this project, and how much money gets spent? And to me, it's $2.5 million comes in in revenue, and $1.5 million is expenses. And at the end of the day, there's a million-dollar revenue, not surplus, but a revenue to the city. I think the other thing that, the other thing that we asked the last time, I know I brought it up the last time, and it's something I'd like to see us continue to have a discussion on, is the fact that, you know, we've got 80,000 square feet of retail, which becomes part of the equation that says, here's how much revenue we're getting from sales tax. And so it would be, it would be helpful to be able to understand what are the expectations from a retail perspective. I mean, 80,000 square feet is a good number compared to some of the previous projects, which was outlined, such as Elon and Heritage. And I don't count the First American Toll Brothers downtown, because the whole idea of that project is to bring people downtown and to utilize the other services that are surrounding the downtown area. But I do see, you know, Elon and Heritage as examples, and right now Heritage is very minor compared to this whole thing. 80,000 is good. We'd like to keep as much tax dollars and sales tax dollars in Santa Ana and not have it go across the Red Hill, pass the Red Hill Road, and end up at the district in Tustin. So, you know, these are some of the things I'd still like to get some information on. And I'm willing to make a motion for a continuance for two weeks. If someone wants to second that, we can second that. If not, we move on to the next motion.
I'll second.
Norma, you second that?
Yes.
Is there any discussion that anybody would like to have at this point in time with regards to the motion second?
This is Commissioner Kano.
Yes.
Just a comment. You know, I did kind of got worried at first when we got this last-minute letter, but after reading them, and, you know, it was mostly last-minute, it has always been last-minute. And we had a study session with the applicant about a month or two ago. And then on April 15, they met with the community, and then make force, the city staff did their job, their due diligence by sending the package to the City of Tustin. So I feel we've had enough study sessions and enough time to discuss this, and staff has done some great work on the report, and they have used, you know, great forces to do the studies for revenue and SEQA and traffic. I really don't see a reason to hold up the applicant or penalize them for other people's timing, depending on their questions or their report. So with that in mind, I would propose that to move forward to city council and affiliate, we can continue working with our council members that are appointed, which is what I would do. But yeah, so that's my take on that. Thank you.
Okay, well, okay, so, thank you for the comment, appreciate what you're saying. Commissioner Nguyen, any comment with regards to the motion second?
I have no comment, but I would agree with Commissioner Kano.
Okay. And Commissioner Rivera, do you have any comments or statements at this point in time?
No, no comment. I think I would just agree with Chair. It seems that we do have a couple of questions and some things, and I think we need to do our due diligence prior to sending it over to city council, you know, sometimes trying to explain some things from that perspective sometimes changes, and it seems that we're redoing the same thing over at city council. So I think if we can get something packaged and sent that way, ready to go, without any other questions, that we can move forward. But I don't see a problem with pushing this for two more weeks.
Okay, so we have a motion as second. Madam Secretary, can we do a roll call vote on this at this point in time?
Commissioner, so the motion is to continue this item until Tuesday, our next regular meeting, which will be on Tuesday, May 26. Commissioner Kano?
Tuesday, May 26?
Yes.
Right.
So I'll do a roll call. Commissioner Kano?
Uh, nay.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Nay.
Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
And Chair McLaughlin?
Aye.
Motion pass, well, we have a 3-2 with Commissioner Fan abstaining, and Vice Chair Contreras Leo absent. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Thank you for the commission, and hopefully this has been taken care of in the next two weeks. I think that should be ample time, and it gives us some ability to also get some feedback from Tustin and a few other areas that we need to do this. Appreciate everybody's help on this. Thank you for the applicant's work.
Chair, I'm sorry. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt. We're having a conversation over here on our end, and we want to clarify with legal. Lisa, if you can please speak to this. Does this motion need for yays?
And not for a continuance, no.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
We have the majority voting for the continuance, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, thank you for clarifying that. That's very good. Appreciate that. Okay, thank you. Are we, are we good at this point in time with the matter, and then it will be continued until Tuesday, May 26? We're going from there. All right. Thank you very much, and thank you for everybody. We will now go to, it's the end of our business calendar, we will now go to staff comments and commissioner comments. We'll start with staff comments. Min, do you have any comments at this point in time?
Yes, Min is here. Let's just make sure he's unmuted. One moment while we check on that.
Has Commissioner, has Commissioner Fan come back on to?
Yes, I am now back. Thank you.
You are now back, Commissioner Fan. Thank you.
Chair, this is Min Thai, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Good evening. The comment I have today is a quick update as to progress on recommendations that we have been working with. Historical Resources Commission, as you know, over the past year have been working to develop a series of recommendations to the city council in terms of evaluating, expanding the commission's role, as well as addressing, you know, regulations leading to historical preservation in the city. As part of the series of workshops that we did, the mission six recommendation came about, which were presented to the city council in April, this past April 7. And part of the recommendation included reducing the fee, application fee, looking at inordinate protecting tree preservation, other administrative type changes. But one other thing that does present related to the planning commission is that the commission requested for the city council to consider adding a voting member on Historical Resources's project to the commission requiring changes on charter. When staff brought this issue to the city council, we received a petition that there is not an interest by the city council to have a voting member of the HRC to be a part of the planning commission. However, there was a discussion that could be an observing member, meaning that there would be someone present, but really more for observing rather than being participants in the planning commission and being voting members. So I want to give you a quick update. Staff is providing the response to the city council, and have been directed to come back in 90 days, which we anticipate will be back in June, on the rest of the recommendation from the HRC and what we are proposing to the city council. So I want to give you that quick update.
Okay. Comments? Did we just get on the list? I'm going to get on the list. Commissioner Kano, do you have any comments relative to this discussion?
No, no comments at all.
Commissioner Garcia?
None.
Commissioner Rivera?
No, no comments.
Commissioner Fan?
None here.
Okay. I guess it comes to me. I think that from, from the basic perspective, I want to say that I think that the, having been on the HRC for a couple of years as a commissioner, I know pretty much the scope and the reality of what and the reality of what is done in that particular commission. I believe that the charter that we have as planning commission is, there is some minor overlap between what we do and what the HRC does, but it's, it's not significant by any shaken imagination. But it is, it is clearly, you know, there. But I would, like council has said, I think I would be, I would not think that we would have a voting member of the HRC on the commission. I'm, I'm okay with having a person be on call, as it was pointed out by Min, or possibly be there as a, as a non-voting individual. I think that's what we're trying to figure out, and we just wanted to get everybody's feedback on that to say, you know, is this, are we consistent with what the council is currently proposing, or do we see things differently? So my, my feeling is that we keep it as a, as a non-voting, as we, first of all, my first blush would be that we don't necessarily have a person that's a full member of the commission for every meeting. We do, we do it on the basis of what needs to be done on a particular item that might come up, and then that person becomes available for that planning commission meeting as a non. That's my thoughts. Somebody said something, I didn't catch who it was. Was that, was that you?
Oh, this is Lisa. This is Lisa. Lisa. I was just going to say, it's not an action item tonight, but if you have thoughts about it and you'd like to contact Min with your thoughts, that would be acceptable as well.
Okay. Perfect. All right. Any, any other comments or questions or statements on this particular item that Min just brought up?
This is Commissioner Canno.
Yeah, go ahead, Angie.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I agree with Chair McLaughlin. I do feel that there's a separation between, within the public administration and then policies within elected officials and appointed officials. So that was just my, my comment on this. Thank you.
Perfect. That's good. Thank you for your comment, Angie. Anyone else at this point in time? Okay.
So that's just me, Chair McLaughlin. Thank you for the time.
Yeah. Appreciate that. Okay, we'll move on to commissioner comments. Commissioner Canno, do you have a comment?
No, no comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia.
No comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Nguyen.
No comment, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera.
No, no comment tonight.
Commissioner Fan.
No comment, that's all.
Okay. And I, I just want to thank everybody for the work that was done on this meeting. A lot of good things came about. I think we have, you know, this is a, this is a big project, and we, we hope that it turns out to be what people expect it to be. So I appreciate everybody participating as they could. And with that, I will call this motion to be, this meeting to be adjourned, and we will be again on Tuesday, May 26th.
6th.
At 5:30. So the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Tuesday, 26th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.